And then looking at the budget, so 2014's budget was about $43 million overall. 2023 was 92 million. That was 114% increase. Revenues in 2014 were 41 million. Last year, or no, 2023, 79 million. So 90% increase in revenues, then going to general funds, which is like all the taxes and stuff. So 22 million in 2014, 34 million 2023, so 54% increase in, you know, taxes and fees and stuff you take from us, or sorry, spending, that's the spending. So 54% increase in spending, that stuff. General fund revenue, so this is the tax stuff, so 30 million back in 2014, 35 million 2023, so 17% increase in taxes and all that stuff. And then also interesting, looking from 2023's budget to this proposed budget, so I said 2023 was 91 million or 92 million. This year is 111 million, so that's a 22% increase just in this past year. Revenue, you know, lagging behind, only a 12% increase, so 88 million. And yeah, so just wanted to say, you know, the budget, just going back in time, is just exploding year after year, and population is just about the same as it was 10 years ago, so it's a huge tax burden on basically the same amount of people. So I challenge you, you know, maybe look, where can, you know, the lady said before, maybe some things can be cut, because just looking at this thing balloon, there's, there's going to be a tax increase, and I know nobody's talking about it yet, but it's just gonna, I'm sure, come out of nowhere, and we're all gonna be upset about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else to address the budget? Here you go, one. I will close the public hearing on the budget. We will move to the consent agenda, approval of the minutes of May 14th, 2024, the monthly bill list, and approval of Stormwater Local Assistance Fund, it's an SLAF agreement, for grant number 21-11, the industrial park stream restoration, that is $283,455, which is a, with that $283,000, we will be able to have, get $566,000 worth of stream restoration done. Approval of the contract to community gathering space project, farmer's market structure on Hickock Street to Hill Studios PC, in the amount of $44,100 for design, construct documents, preparation, bidding, and negotiation assistance, and construction observation, project closeout assistance.
So move.
Second.
Got a motion in the second. Any questions?
I would like to separate that approval contract to the community gathering from the other items, if that was a possibility.
You should have probably done that in the adjustments.
I should have, but I didn't know we were going to vote on all of them as a chunk.
We always do, on the consent agenda. Have a motion in the second. Madam Clerk, any further discussion?
I, yeah, is this going to be the $44,000, is that going to be for a permanent structure? Or is that going to be for immovable structure?
It would be a permanent structure.
Not for $44,000, that's the planning stage.
That's designed.
Yeah, but the designing thing. And is the $44,000 part of the grant that we have gotten, or is that going to cost us for years' money additional money?
That's part of the grant.
Well, right, the, it's kept at 10% of the grant of $275,000, so 27,000, and then back in November, council agreed, as part of the budget amendment number one, FY 2324, allocated that additional dollars to $44,100, as part of your budget amendment package. So, so there is some general fund dollars.
So that was from general funds, but it wasn't all from the grant?
Correct, so, yeah, so, so 27,500 is from the grant, the remaining dollars make up the $44,100 is, is from general.
So, I thought we had gotten $250,000, closer to 250, for this part.
$275,000.
275, and we couldn't use that amount of money under the money?
Right, it does cap out, and it was in the memo, in the packet, that it does cap out at 10% of the amount, of the grant, so the amount, total amount that we could use for design was 27,500.
All right, and then, if this, have you, we having come out with the, this is to give the Hill Studio for the designing, but how much do you expect the construction on this is gonna cost?
That, that would be part of their responsibility to, to, once they work with the management group to do schematic design, then they, they would come up with construction documents.
And then, what about the, I just want to see some construction. So we still don't have a clue, and is that going to make Hickock Street to be a closed street, or is that going to allow it to be open completely?
The direction that staff had received from council, after it had affirmed, you know, moving forward with Hickock Street, was that it should remain open, and that is what, the direction that we are giving to the designer.
Okay. And then, is there any direction to the designer not to use private bathrooms, or is that still on the table?
I'm not sure.
Where you were going to, you had some drawings in the past, where there was gonna be a structure that you were going to rent for bathrooms?
That, that is not in the contract that was in your packet, seeing as part of, you know, what their scope of work is.
How do you foresee a permanent structure to be built and not have the ability to be movable and still be able to open the streets? I'm still confused about that part.
That would be part of, the original design was looking at retractable, a retractable awning, and, and that may be the final design, but it, it may not be. There, there is a amount, and I believe through central business, we did look at the, at the schematics, or we looked at the width of the street, and, so, I mean, again, it is gonna be up to the designer to figure out what is gonna work for, for that, for that area.
This, I feel like it should have gone to central business again, just for, before, for us to get some more of these questions answered. So at this moment, I'm gonna go, actually, I guess on all these items now, just because of this item. But I, I foresee seeing this on the central business, and I hope that we can receive some more information about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Nay.
Councilwoman Hoppett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
Let us file one, consent agenda passes. In, other introductions and presentations, we have IT Director Jay Waller to present on IT operations. Come on down.
Hello, and thank you. As the mayor said, my name is Jay Waller, I'm the IT Director for the town, and will just give you a brief overview of the information technology department here. Starting off with our team, we have a relatively small group, four people. For me, I have been here since this past July, I've been in technology all my life. I worked for 32 years for analog devices in Greensboro, North Carolina. After that, I was the IT Manager for the town of Mount Pleasant, South Carolina, and they currently have a population of 93,000, so, and the roles are very, very similar to what I do here. I'm also, I'm a member of Valguide, which is the Virginia Local Government Information Technology Executives, that's a group here in the state of Virginia that shares IT information, and I'm also a member of InfraGuard, and that's a partnership between the FBI and government and private sectors for the protection of critical infrastructure. And their main, their main goal is also to share information to help us be more protective on our infrastructure needs. The other people in our group, we have a network engineer responsible for all the infrastructure management and support, we have a network systems administrator, and he takes care of the applications and some of the systems that work with those applications, and we have a IT systems technician that takes care of mainly like the endpoints, or laptops, desktops, things like that. I'm happy to say that the current state of the IT systems here in the town is very good. Everyone has done an excellent job of making sure that we have kept things going in our, and are running a safe and very effective way. We have a BitSite rating of 780, and BitSite scores companies, government agencies, and gives them a cybersecurity rating that banks and other organizations use, such as insurance agencies when it comes to like cyber insurance. So we have like a 99 percentile better than our peer group, so we've done very well on that score. In BitSite, we work with them as well to keep track of vendors and other companies we work with, to make sure that they don't have any security holes. Services provided, of course, number one is support. For infrastructure, we have serp, we have servers, switches, wireless, backup and recovery, that's very key, to make sure we have continued operations in case anything goes wrong. We also support over 300 of the endpoints, like I mentioned earlier, we have at least, at least 50 some mobile devices, including phones and iPads. When it comes to systems and applications, we did a report for finance, just to see how many different pieces of software was used in the town, it was over 300 line items. Now, some of these things are very small and don't do a whole lot, but, but, but still, that's 300 things to keep up with, and that goes everything from the ERP system that we use for finance, down to things such as the cameras here for security, the management of those, the card readers for the doors, just about anything you can think of, it's got an electronic connection, we're working with it. Another thing that we do in IT group is we make sure we have policies and governance for those policies, and we are working on now to update some of those, including a procurement policy that'll make procurement of information technology devices and systems more regulated, and give everyone an actual procedure to go through, so things are purchased in a much more ordered fashion. Another part we do a lot with is project management, and that's not just product management, project management for IT things specifically, it's for other town projects. Case in point would be the park. We've been working out there very diligently to put in Wi-Fi devices out there for the public to use, and also security cameras. So sometimes when there's a big project like that, we will be heavily involved with that for the IT part of it, and we have to manage that part of the project for those. And the last thing is research and emerging technology. We're constantly being asked to look into new things, new ideas, see if there's anything out there that might, we, we could be using that would help us be more efficient and more effective in our jobs, and that's something we try to support everyone on. And one of the big things there is the emerging technology, and that's the stuff that's coming down the road, and with that, there's, there's a lot of things that we have to keep in mind. One thing is, some of you may have heard the term IOT, that's Internet of Things, that is anything that you have now that connects to the Internet, things that we used to not think of, like refrigerators, you know, and things like that, that people use in their private lives, all of the Alexa devices you have in your house, that's just an example of it. For organizations like us, it could be systems that monitor wastewater, or electricity, or anything like that, you know, it's anything that connects back to the Internet. Another thing with emerging technology that is going to have a big impact now are drones. Drones are being used everywhere, and I'm sure most of you have seen in the news where we have Wing here, that's gonna be doing deliveries here in town using drones. The next one is the big thing that takes a lot of our focus is cybersecurity. That's, that's a huge part of our job, we have to stay ahead of what's going on with different layered systems and layered technology, there's not one thing that we can do that's gonna make us bulletproof. We have to do, we have to use different technologies, and one of the key things is us, is our people. And I know that you get those little know before trainings and stuff, you know, that we almost take, I take it too, and that's one of the most effective things that we can do, is train people and, and make sure there are lines of communications open for everyone. If you have any doubt about something you receive, please let me, let one of us know, we'll be happy to look into it. It's, I'd much rather take the time of looking into something than something happened on the back end and we have to come back and take care of it then. That's, that's never any fun. And the third thing is, is something that's going to be affecting all of us soon, is artificial intelligence. That is going to impact everything that we, we do. It's gonna be, as far as people being able to use it to ask it to write a report, or analyze data, down to systems like your air conditioning, or the water, or whatever, it'll be looking at things like that. So that is such a new area of technology, we don't know exactly what policies and what kind of governance is going to be needed for that. So we are currently involved with a group that's being headed out of California, they are looking at bringing together municipalities and counties, basically local, state, local government, and trying to get together these policies, and not just for your own organization, but things that you should look into for organizations that you're working with. You know, how do they utilize AI? Are they taking your data and running it through some process to data mine? So there's things like that that's, you know, being investigated as well. So that is going to be a bigger and bigger part of our picture here going forward. And that is basically it. I didn't want to make too long of a presentation, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, or, or please shoot me an email. I can say that it is an absolute pleasure to be working for the town, we have a very dedicated staff, and everyone works very hard every day to, to serve the people.
Any questions?
Yeah, just mention something about the drones. We have, obviously have the drones on that side of town, are they moving down here too, downtown?
I haven't heard of any expansion of that so far.
Oh, okay.
You're talking about the wing drones?
Yeah.
They, they have a FAA limit on how far they can fly.
That's what I thought.
And so unless they open a location down here that can accomplish it, there's no way from their one location, they can travel that far.
Oh, well, and I also heard too, because of the buildings and stuff, but do you say the wing drones, or was it in your presentation?
Yes, I just used that as an example of the different technology and how it's being utilized now.
Oh, okay.
And the most recent announcement has been that they are partnering with Grubhub, and they expect to roll out more restaurants that they could, that you could order from Grubhub and then, and then use them.
And I think they're in negotiation.
That's been the latest announcement.
They're in negotiation, I think, with the FAA in order to get an increase, but those things take a long time to do. They're trying to, I think, raise it to six or six and a half mile radius, but they only have approval for three and a half right now, so they're trying to raise it, it may take a while, but they are working at it.
The thing is, when I got confused is when you say, oh, they're coming here, then I was really excited, because I know they have been here for a while, so, okay, thank you.
Anything else? Jay, thank you.
Thank you.
Very good explanation of what most of us have no idea what's going on. Then we have the citizens comment section, which we will open it up for citizens to comment. You have three minutes to address the podium, name and address, and your responses to me.
Chris Wallace, 1370 Ruby Street. Mayor, you think by now you know the rules. Town code, section 2 dot 61, says questions containing several distinct propositions. If the question under discussion, which would be the consent agenda, contains several distinct propositions, the same shall be divided at the request of any member and a vote taken separately. Doesn't say anything about adjustment in the agenda or anything else, it says, while it's under discussion, if a member of council wants to separate it, it's separated, and everything's voted on separately.
Well, we can, we can ask for the motions to be rescinded, and new motions and votes.
Well, you had a council member ask.
You know, this is how we've done it in the past, Chris, and, you know, I don't know, I don't know all the stuff like you do.
And the fact that you can't learn them at this point in your career, it's pretty sad.
Oh, come on, Chris. You're, never mind.
I'm a what?
Either, either get back to the point, or get out.
The point is, you had a member ask for the things to be voted on separately, and you said, no, I don't want to. This isn't the Mike Barber Show, this is the Christiansburg Town Council, and you answer to the citizens, the town doesn't answer to you, and neither do your fellow council members, they were all elected just like you. I think some of them probably got more votes than you did, Mike.
You what?
I think some of them probably got more votes than you did.
I don't think so. Don't think so. Anyone else? That's entertaining discussion. So no one else? I'm sorry, ma'am.
Regarding Hickock Street, Matthew Hicks, 607 and a half, South Franklin Street. I know we're pushing fast and furious on the Hickock Street closure, I personally am against closing the street, I don't know where it's at in this discussion. I know we just approved another $44,000 to do another design, I thought we already had $250,000 towards the design and planning. I think the project is up to $4 million. If we did a vote for the 22 citizens and actually called every vote, I think you get an overwhelming response that they say they do not want it closed, but yet, we're steam rolling ahead. My biggest question is, by 2030, how many total streets downtown be closed? Andrew and Randy might have that answer. I think three total streets are gonna be closed downtown. Pepper Street, Hickock, and one other. So are we gonna have a downtown anymore, or is it just gonna be street closures everywhere? I don't think we're going in the right direction. So I would just say, listen to the citizens, why don't, maybe it's too far gone, you guys made your decision, doesn't matter, but I'll think the citizens themselves wouldn't want it closed. I, as a citizen, don't want it closed, I, as a business owner, don't want it closed, it's gonna hinder my business that's over there. The other thing is, if you look at Salem and Blacksburg, their farmer's market is growing and thriving, why? They all have a corner location and a big parking lot. We just purchased a $500,000 parking lot that's highly dilapidated, why don't we look at putting the farmer's market into a niche over there? It could be a permanent structure, save us all a ton of money. Just my ideas. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? You know, one, I will close the public comments and comments. We'll go to committee reports, Mr. Bishop, Street.
No reports.
Nothing to report.
I think so.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hicks?
Just talking about the next central business meeting, Kimm and I, hopefully next week we'll have a meeting.
Mr. Jenkins?
Nothing.
Ms. Bowman?
Nothing.
Thank you. Moving on, discussion and action by mayor and council, Aquatic Center's, Aquatic's property ground lease agreement in, with NRVA Incorporated, H2 Okies.
Make a motion that we approve it as drafted. Second.
Got a motion in the second, is there any discussion?
I do. Where did that $1,000 rand go, Randy? Is it still in the contract somewhere? Because I couldn't read it anywhere.
It, it is included in the grant, is in the lease as written, it basically is provided.
What page was that on there? Because I didn't.
First page.
Yes, yes it is, first page, under item three.
So that's still in place, correct?
It is.
And then, another question I had, I believe the mayor had mentioned something last time, that the building was to stay after 30 years. But from what I was reading on the contract, I don't think, and obviously that was the other day, and it was really late at night, but it didn't seem like that was what was in the contract. He said that it could, I forgot the right words for it, but it could be taken or something like that, I think.
It did state that the, if they pull out, the billing itself would convert over to the town.
To the town, so that is under the contract.
It is, it is.
I have not went to the police in a moment, too, so I can't say.
I don't think it changed anything from when you wrote it, is that correct?
So the building is to stay after 30 years?
No, if they, the way it's written right now, if they should, when, if they should ever pull out, the billing comes to the town. Now, after 30 years, it's just, as long as they're there, it's their building, but it's, they say, well, you know, we're not gonna do it for another 10 years, then it converts over to the town.
So just to make sure, after 30 years, it stays to the town?
No, 30 years, it still belongs to the, no, right, after 30 years, it still belongs to the, what, did I get this wrong?
The swimmer.
I got it wrong the last time, I ain't gonna even try it. You know, even after 30 years, if they're, if we grant them an extension, you know, it still belongs to them. But they decide after 30 years, we don't want to do it any longer, then it comes to the town.
What happens in five years, if, and doesn't, I, I know you guys are gonna be happy there, but after five years, let's just say.
It comes to the town, the way I read it.
It, it would be up to town council after the 30 years, whether you grant an extension or not.
That still doesn't, I, I'm not.
As long as they're in there, as long as they're in there, the billing belongs to the club. If they're out of the, if the club's no longer in there, whether it's five years, two years, or whatever, the billing comes to the town. As long as they're in there, it's their building.
And then in 30 years, they can take it with them, if that was the case, if they didn't want it anyway?
No.
No.
Once they pull out, I don't care how many years it is, then it comes to the town.
But in 30 years, they can renew their lease with us, whoever's on council then, renew the lease, and it still remains their building for the next 30 to 60 years, or however many, however long the, right, exactly, at 30 years.
Probably won't be.
Thank you. Yeah, so.
Yeah, I mean, the building becomes part of the property, we own the property, so the only way, so the only way you could really, if you wanted to take your building, is to tear it down, if you want to go through that expense. Or some successors will all be in nursing homes, but that's beside the point.
The additional period after the 30 years would be at their discretion, though, is at the tenant's discretion as to whether there'd be a 10-year renewal or not.
Is there a maintenance agreement with this as well?
It would be their building, up, basically up until that point, so they, they would have to maintain it.
There is?
Under item 11.
Yeah, only question I have, other than what's been asked, is there had been mention of the children from the middle school and the high school having subuses, is there any language written in there that would guarantee that use? I know you talked about working out a schedule, how do you foresee that happening?
Coach Pearl is sitting behind us, she is a 25-year veteran, someone of the, if you can wait for you up there, future middle school management coach, she's integrated in our program, will be absolutely included for her next one, those people, my children and other children behind me as well.
And that's the mutual agreement you have with the Aquatic Center and, and the H2 Okies. Right, yeah, so that's.
That's what we do, we are swimming in and out.
Right.
So we both know.
But that's the mutual agreement between those, your program and our Aquatic Center, not the council and you.
No, sir, but I want you to know, in your face, we operate the building to support your citizens, as well as our program.
I'm with you.
Thank you, thank you, Tim, also.
Any other comments or questions?
And one other question, the building, as our building, the Aquatic Center itself, I know we have been receiving money from you guys for the usage of it, is that's gonna continue the way it has been, right?
Perry wants to help us out a little bit, but I say this, we will continue to pay for the building, we need to pay for the building, we will continue to drive a practice, new facility, through Sundays, through practice, through programs and integration. Perry, did I miss anything there?
Yes, ma'am, that does correct, we'll continue the operation, that we're something that would be shorting, the contract will remain the same, we go up approximately 3% each year on our contract, and besides our swimming, the payment to town, with that we have a lease.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I just want to say that I, this is a really special program, I appreciate how prepared and flexible, and how supportive the team has been, and it's been wonderful to see so many of the participants and the members come to council when this has been on the agenda, and we just appreciate you all coming out, and the kids for coming in and speaking out, and I, I just appreciate that.
Good. No other comments or questions? Madam Clerk, would you poll council?
Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bowman?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Aye.
Councilwoman Hoppett?
Aye.
Councilman Jenkins?
Aye.
Councilman Wilson?
Aye.
That is six of them, thank you very much, congratulations. Now, we look to see, we look to see it up in the next 30 days, but other than that, let's see how good you are.
I'll work on some bread money with you, we'll figure it out, we'll get it up there.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you all very much, thank you all so much.
I'm glad you want to leave, man.
I should have asked, but how long is the contract expected to be for, before the building is finished?
They got, they got two years.
Two years to build it?
Mm-hmm.
We should give it to Chicken Pilate, they'll build it.
That's already leased.
No, I know, but the, no, but I'm saying, they can build a Chicken Pilate like, that's what it seems.
All right, so next on the agenda, we have staff reports, town manager?
Uh, just point out that at your seats, you have a copy of the comprehensive plan summary, uh, this is basically the summary of the public input we've gotten on the comprehensive plan, uh, we received nine-hundred-and-fifteen surveys by the March twenty-fifth cutoff, and, uh, there's kind of a little summary of the information that we've gotten in there. And I'll just point out also that, uh, the next Rockin' Main event is going to be June eighth from five to nine.
Okay.
That's all I've got.
Mr. Broden?
Mr. Mayor.
Madam Finance Director, and soon to be fin, no. Okay, you good?
I'm good.
Very good. Council reports, uh, Mr. Bishop?
Uh, no report.
Ms. Hicks?
No reports.
Ms. Hackett?
Nothing to report.
Mr. Jenkins?
Nothing.
Mr. Wilson?
Nothing, sir.
Mr. Bowman? Ms. Bowman? What's the last one?
He was doing good.
Ms. Bowman, I, hold it, Ms. Bowman, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's been a long night.
I was actually, can I take two seconds to ask you something, okay?
Sure.
Um, the.
This is under other business, right?
Yeah, for the, um, for that event, I think you are going already, but, um, I think the town council meeting happens to be on the Tuesday, wouldn't it?